of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations, this is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Route M Brown Act. Items requiring council's actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration as the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Have no one here, any hands raised, any emails? It's here, so we will place a public comment. City manager. Is council member Woodall on the hall?
We might want to just check zero three nine one, is that council member Julie Woodall?
That's Kevin.
That's Kevin, okay, so now.
Okay, I just want to make sure before I run any further to go. No, that's Kevin. Okay. And we will move on to the consent calendar, is there any council member who would like to remove an item?
Nope.
Does a member Wilson?
Not going to.
Then, our last form, is there anyone in the public who would wish to hand raise emails? Then I've been asked for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So much.
Have a motion, they're second, so you have a motion in the second. Motion carries forward zero. Reports, staff, communications, page fifteen in our packets, city manager.
Thank you Mayor Darnes and members of the council, so I just, kind of late breaking news on your day, it should be just a quick letter from the Revel Elementary School District related to a fourteen day notice of proposal to implement developer fees. Staff does not really have any more information than what is presented in the letter, but we are trying to get additional information, when we do, we will go ahead and email the council any additional information that we have, but these fees are often being adopted, not just in Humboldt County, but throughout the state by the school districts related to new development in cities. Typically, what we see are fees on residential properties of around five dollars a square foot for new developments, and then around seventy or eighty cents for commercial developments, and then those are added fees on top of any state mandated fees that the city redevelop implements related to development and the city itself implements. But, so we'll, we'll keep you updated on that. The city did submit some material to HCOG for a zero emission vehicle study, so we donated to the fleet and got their most recent mileage and that sort of information might possibly make the city eligible for zero emission vehicle funding down the road potentially. And I am planning on attending the RoboCoast Regional Economic Development Conference in Lakeport later this week, and then I want to go ahead and hand it over to our wastewater superintendent, Mr. Marshall Moore, and he's got some good news to share with the council.
I just want to go on record saying that Kevin, the set for our water department is, has recently passed his treatment, water treatment grade two exam, and we have another grade two water treatment operator, as well as Andrew Lewis, one of my operators, he just passed his wastewater treatment grade two. And Andres Lopez just became our, our brand new, brand new operator, so I want to go on record saying that.
Congratulate them.
Yes, please do.
Returning back to the mayor and the staff is happy to answer any questions of the council.
I'm going to put them. Just two dogs and one cat transported to Miranda's, but that's a three week period, yeah?
Yes.
It's not too, not too bad. So beyond that, I just, I want to thank city staff for everything it does do, and this is our first time doing rain, so thank you for your service, and I'm really, really glad that we've got the staff moving up there. Yeah, that's good, and that's it for me, thank you. Thank you, council member Woodall, no motion. I assume we'll have closer.
Well, just a question back on the school district thing, is that just like you said for the additional addition to the building fee, is that like a one time, someone's going to build an house?
Yeah, so it'd be a new, new construction and then they need to addition over five hundred square feet.
And so then after that, they just do it for a long time, right, if they're building a new, they don't pay, they tax onto their.
It's not an annual thing, it's because it will be taxed, and my understanding is it makes the school district eligible for additional grant funding from the state if they implement that.
I just, I just, that's what I bought, and I want to speak there. But don't think I have anything else that was really haunting me, the, the.
Thank you. And I have no questions, I was actually wondering the same thing, Frank, so thank you for asking that first, and are there any questions from the public? Any hands raised, any emails?
Go ahead, you're getting your shirts.
Thank you guys, thank you, I'm jumping on the man of the span, but you know, thank yous, and I didn't put you down there Rosa, and definitely congratulate them, that is awesome, thank you for ushering them through. Okay, and now we will go move on to special presentations, unmet transit needs, the public hearing, page nineteen in our packets, city manager.
Thank you Mayor Darnes, each year, as established by the California Transportation Development Act, otherwise known as the TDA, the Humboldt County Association of Governments is required to conduct a citizen participation process to identify any unmet transit needs within Humboldt County. This process is required prior to allocations of TDA funding for the following fiscal year. All comments deemed to meet the definition of unmet transit need will then be analyzed and reviewed by HCOG's Social Services Transportation Advisory Council to determine if the need is reasonable to me. So comments that are operational in nature are forwarded to transit operators. The recommendation for this evening is to prepare to go ahead and open the public hearing, to receive any input on any unmet transit needs in the community, to go ahead and close that public hearing, and then make a motion to direct staff to send a letter to the Humboldt County Associations of Governments, HCOG relaying the comments that are made during the public hearing regarding unmet transit needs. And then I believe we have somebody from HCOG here that are available via Zoom.
Hand raised.
And if this hand raised, to provide a brief presentation and answer any questions that the council may have, so I assume that would be our hand raised, and give us a second while, Rose, if we could unmute him. And I believe it says Stevie Luther with HCOG.
So Stevie. Good evening, mayor and council, and thank you, city manager, yeah, this is Stevie Luther with HCOG, I just wanted to be here to answer any questions, and also inform people that if they're listening to this meeting later, they can go online and enter their comments through our online public survey. They can go to hcaog.net in our public transportation page and enter their unmet transit needs comments there, we do take comments year round, they can also phone our office, and your city can forward comments that they hear at any time to us, so thank you.
Thank you, Stevie, thank you for being here, did you, there was a small presentation, I didn't know if you wanted to present that, or are you good?
No, we'll leave it at that for this annual hearing.
Okay, well, thank you, so the hearing is open, if there's a member of the public, if there's a hand raised or an email that has a question, or a comment, or observation, or Stevie and HCOG, please come forward now. Any emails, any comments? Not that.
Have unmet needs, we have a what system, what's your time?
Yeah.
Do we have any unmet needs?
Do we have any?
Yes.
Well, that's the question, I don't have a unmet need, but if someone has an unmet need, this is their moment to stand up for, throughout the year, they can call HCOG, or they can go online to hcaog.net, public transportation, and put it in the comment section there.
Then Mayor Darnes, if I may, HCOG will be holding their own public hearing on Thursday, November twentieth of this year, and HCOG recommends that each entity conduct a separate public hearing in our own localities to, you know, be able to submit to HCOG your specific comments related to the, to their jurisdiction. So all public comments received by December thirty first will be discussed by the appropriate committee of HCOG, and report of the findings will go to the HCOG board again in twenty twenty six.
Thank you, seeing no hand raised, emails, or a member of the public in the audience having commented, I will close the public hearing, and thank you, Stevie, for being here, and I will recommend what the recommendation folks are doing in file.
And we can go ahead and just close the public comment.
Hearing, okay, send a letter to Humboldt County Association of Governments relating to comments made, thank you. Now we will move on to the presentation on the year and fiscal report, fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six, page twenty five in our packets, financial director.
Good evening, Mayor Darnes and members of the council, I'll give Rosa a second here to get the PowerPoint presentation up.
It's on here.
Thank you, Rosa. The annual financial report summarizes and analyzes the city's financial performance for fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five. The report details revenues and expenditures incurred during fiscal year, and explains any material differences between the figures and the adjusted budget. Financial reserve and fund balances are also updated at the end of the fiscal year, and it's important to note that this report was created using un-audited financials as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. The official audit is expected to be completed in early twenty twenty six. The city has three main funds for consolidating its finances, the general fund, enterprise funds, and special funds. City expenses slightly exceeded revenues by just over a hundred and four thousand dollars, mainly due to a seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollar reduction in the special revenue funds, which involve required drawdowns of our CDG program income lane and ARPO funds, which were required to spend by December twenty twenty six. This slide compares actual revenues and expenses to the budgeted amounts for major funds. All fund revenues outside the water fund exceeded the budgeted amount. The water fund budget included the entire twelve plus million dollar water infrastructure improvement project, which was expected to be completed in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Due to project delays, most of the revenues and expenditures will now occur in the current fiscal year. All funds except streets have budgeted expenditures below the original budget. General fund expenditures were twenty five percent lower than planned, mainly because of scheduled capital projects and unfilled positions in the police department. The city's fund balances totaled over nine point seven million dollars at the end of the fiscal year. The city expects total fund balances to decrease during the current fiscal year because of those ARPO revenues received by the city that must be spent, and large infrastructure projects that are being initiated from the list of projects resulting from the December twenty twenty two earthquake event. General fund revenues were approximately one percent higher than budgeted. The city recorded higher than expected property tax and new vehicle license fees, along with insurance premium reimbursement and rental income in the other revenues category. The city's general fund earned fifty four thousand dollars in interest across all, across all funds, mainly due to the city's proactive decision to invest excess liquidity into Lake or the local agency investment fund. The city received nearly two hundred and fifty two thousand dollars in interest in the last fiscal year. Major revenues were one point four one million dollars for the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, with property taxes and new vehicle license fees and retail sales tax generating over five hundred and twenty one thousand and four hundred and forty nine thousand dollars respectively. The city received over two hundred and sixty one thousand dollars in canvas tax revenue last fiscal year.
Two minute.
Two hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. And this slide here kind of just goes over some of those figures I discussed. We'll go to the next side, thank you. General fund expenditures totaled one point six two million, or five hundred and forty five thousand dollars under budget, mainly due to unspent capital projects that were planned and not completed, and generally lower spending across all departments. Notably, the police budget was two hundred and ninety four thousand dollars under budget because of unfilled staff positions that were planned but not filled. Street fund revenues were seven percent higher than budgeted, primarily due to higher revenues received across all funds. Actual expenditures were nine percent above budget, primarily due to the completion of capital projects from the December twenty twenty two earthquake list of projects, which addressed road damage. The street funds consist of gas masks, SP one road maintenance, and rehab account, TDA funds, and RSTP revenues and expenditures. Actual revenues for the sewer enterprise fund were twelve percent more than budgeted, and expenditures were ten percent less than the budgeted allocation. This variance is attributed to staffing shortage amongst public works department, and capital project budgets, and capital projects that were budgeted but not yet completed. Sewer fund balances increased by nearly two hundred and thirty five thousand. Actual revenues for the water enterprise fund exceeded the budget by forty seven percent, primarily due to funds received from Cal OES for projects linked to the December twenty twenty two earthquake that have not yet been completed. Meanwhile, expenditures were nineteen percent less than planned. The variance in water capital fund is directly related to capital projects that were budgeted but remain unfinished, while lower water operation costs remain mainly due to salary savings. Water fund balances increased by twenty nine percent, but the city anticipates this will recop, will decline over the current fiscal year as large infrastructure projects related to the earthquake are utilized through the project completion. Other significant funds in the special revenues fund include the building fund, the supplemental law enforcement services fund, and the CDG fund. The building fund receives an annual transfer from the general fund to cover expenses that exceed revenues. The supplemental law enforcement services fund provides additional support for law enforcement, which includes salaries and benefits. And the CDG fund must be fully drawn down before using the city's CDGPI or program income revenues. Currently, these funds are under contract with the county of Humboldt to offer loans to qualified applicants affected by the two thousand twenty two earthquake disaster. That completes my presentation for tonight, thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Financial director, Travis, I'm bored. Councilor Wilson?
Well, just a quick question on this back on the general fund, the city council said we were budgeted in the autumn, nine seven hundred. You said twenty one thousand, what, what did we, what did we do with it?
Some of that consisted of legal expenses that were unbudgeted, another part of that was for water and sewer bill increases. Under the city council budget, the city covers the expenditures for the fire department and library, water, and sewer costs, and some of those costs were largely been budgeted during budget process during that fiscal year.
But which, which ones you, if you remember, in particular, what was it, what contributed to the bigger amount?
It was the legal fees, they were over the budgeted amount.
Okay, that's that.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Orr.
I have no question.
Mayor Potem.
No questions, just to thank you for the straightforward and easy to understand presentation and slides.
Thank you. And if there's any questions from the public, any hand raised, emails? And thank you very much Travis for that presentation, and for all the work they had to go into, I'll get there, appreciated. And we will now move on to ordinances and special resolutions, twenty twenty five slash eleven oh four point zero five introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number four one six dash two zero two five, removing section ten point zero five point seven eight zero, and amending section ten point zero five point zero two zero, and ten point zero five point seven nine zero of the Red Valley Municipal Code restricting parking of specific commercial vehicles in designated areas within the city. That will be helpful. City manager, that's page forty two in our packets.
All right, thank you, Mayor Darnes, members of the council, I'll try to keep this as simple as possible, the, so over the past years, the council is well aware, the issue of commercial truck parking in Red Valley has arisen, and has been historically an issue that periodically has popped up in the, in the long distance history of, of the city. Some of the concerns related to commercial truck parking include infrastructure damage, mostly to streets that are not rated for the weight of regular commercial truck vehicles. This includes potential damage to underground utilities, so city water, city sewer, or Pacific Gas and Electric gas pipelines. There's also traffic safety hazards, this is sort of how the, the issue that initially got raised last year from the commercial trailer parking backwards in, in a location. And then just also just general neighborhood impacts related to kind of uses that are not typically associated with residential areas, aesthetic issues, livability concerns for residents, including truck idling and horn usage. So the, the, as the council is aware, Red Valley Municipal Code kind of really was lacking in terms of an ability to do enforcement related to this particular issue, and so the item was referred off to the city's traffic committee, in addition to the guest representative of, for the trucking community. And the, the traffic committee met, I believe, twice, and then there were some email conversations that, to kind of just finalize the drafting of the document. And then key provisions related to the, to the ordinance are the definition of commercial trucks and trailers, the implementation really of, kind of, this is central to the new scheme here related to truck parking, which is a permit system that would allow in certain locations, commercial truck parking to occur in residential neighborhoods, provided that there's a joint approval process between the chief of police and the city's street superintendent, to ensure that both public safety and infrastructure considerations are addressed for commercial trucks parking on public roadways. So that permitting process leaves objective criteria, no cost to the applicants, will require regular renewal and display requirements on the vehicles. There would be specific street restrictions, so commercial truck freight vehicles and their trailers would be banned on Wildwood Avenue between US one oh one and Eagle Prairie Bridge for parking of more than two hours. And by law, we are, we cannot implement an ordinance that does not allow for the loading or unloading purposes of commercial vehicles. So specifically, they're accepted in the, in the proposed ordinance as the loading and unloading purposes for commercial vehicles. And that, the ordinance also allows the city council the authority by resolution to ban on any street that the council sees fit through resolution. So again, there are certain exemptions, so vehicles actively making deliveries or pickups, vehicles used for construction activity under valid building permit emergency public, or utility service vehicles. So the chief of police, the city would retain relocation authority, there would be, you know, certain protections, grace periods for permit holders to, you know, comply, including a twenty four hour notice. The, their fine system would be a first violation of a hundred dollars, second two hundred, third or subsequent violation two hundred and fifty dollars. And there is an administrative appeal process through the city manager within a ten day window, and then one of the things that the, the traffic committee and our, our guests added was permit transfer ability, so the idea being that you may own a commercial vehicle, freight vehicle, that needs to go into the shop for work, and it's very common for a trucker to rent a truck or use another truck during those periods, because typically they have to go to a special location, takes a long time to get that work done. So those permits would be transferable, and and again, through the, through the chief of police and the street superintendent, so this is an ordinance that does not require secret approval, there are costs that's really de minimis associated with implementing this program. There would need to be some new signage installed, so one of the, one of the issues related to parking on Wildwood Avenue is that under, under state laws, only enforceable when the, that section of the street is clearly signed. So, so there will, there will be new signs needing to be erected on Wildwood Avenue. We cannot just place a blanket sign at the entrances of the, the city county boundary and just say, you know, no truck parking period, has to be specific to the location. So, one other thing that the council may want to consider, and certainly this is just a first public hearing, there will be a second one, is the council may also want to consider directing staff to draft a separate agenda item to restrict all parking to no more than two hours on Wildwood Parking, specific to three locations. So three locations which have seen in the past some other parking issues not related to, to truck parking would be in front of City Mall, Memorial Park, and Blue Star Memorial Park, which would simplify the signage, and just make it very simple for us to just put strictly two hour parking as opposed to individual signs, say two hour parking, commercial trucks only, just makes it cleaner. And, and that's kind of where we are at, so this is a introduction and first reading, so the recommendation to the council, now that you've received a presentation from the staff, is to go ahead and open the public hearing, and deliberate to provide additional direction to staff if any. uh, and deliberate to provide the additional direction to staff if any. And then, uh, uh, the council should motion to continue the item to a regularly scheduled meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five for a second public hearing and potential adoption of the ordinance number four-one-six dash two-zero-two-five. Um, and of course, alternatively, the council can take no action. And with that, I'll go ahead and return it to the mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor, what then?
No real questions about the ordinance. I think that this was a, a good compromise that we came to that hopefully meets everybody's needs. Um, my one question is about the restricted parking two hours out. Like, what about specialty stuff? Like when the blood mobile holds it there? Like, would that would be?
Yeah, there could be easily exceptions. So I think, uh, certainly that is a, a public benefit.
Sure.
So, uh, that, we, there easily could be exceptions.
Okay, as, as long as there's some wiggle room in there for specialty stuff like that, and just offer stuff for the community. Um, that's it for, thank you.
Councilmember Orr? Uh, just two questions really quickly. Um, it doesn't say anything, but when we talked about the trailer parking stuff on streets, how long they have to be gone before it's considered a new parking spot? Or how far they have to move down the street before it's considered a new parking spot?
Um, so related to the trailer parking, you're still going to have the seventy-two hour requirement of all vehicles on, on the county street, but we can look at their own city street. We can look at that a little more in, in depth, um, uh, to see if there's, uh, a way that we can make that language clear.
Thank you, councilmember Wilson.
Well, it looks like you did a good job bringing this up to give it, or was working, was confusing before and conflicting. Um, you mentioned the one thing about wanting to do a two-hour parking on the whole Wildwood. If that, that would be a future agenda.
But that would be a future agenda item. And it's, it's up to the council to make that direction. And then again, it would just be specifically limited to three locations in front of city hall, in front of, uh, uh, Blue Star Memorial Park and Memorial Park. So just this little area right here, basically in front of.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be trying to impact.
No.
Uh, my, because people would.
No, yeah.
Now, what is the, the status that is over, you were saw them like, I mostly love trucks. And is that on his private property that he's doing that?
Yeah, so that's on his, his private property. I don't know the details, the specifics of it, but that, you know, I think, um, you know, um, we can easily get any of the truckers with contact information for the property owner to communicate with them about potentially renting a space there as well.
But, but that, I'm not really looking to do anything to them. I just noticed that there was where they never, before all of this took place, there was, they were never over there. And then once we got all the discussions and meetings, now that I see this, you actually quite, quite a number of trucks. But if that's on his private property, I guess that's in private, that's in business.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that they're related or conversations here and that, and that, but it, the timing is, yeah, uh, is, uh, uh, interesting, but it's, I don't, I don't think that it's related. And I, um, I, I can see if I can give more information on what exactly they're doing over there.
Okay, and others now, um, I, I think it's good what you did. Yeah, so then we'll, second reading will be the next agenda, or the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I have, uh, one is, uh, regarding possible signage that we, that's something that will be interesting to know as far as if we want to do more or less. And, um, hit on the sign that says no more than two hours. Oh, you stated it. Could it also say, and no overnight park? Because even though that's implied by no more, but we all go to bed and we wake up, you know, and if there's no one controlling overnight, then there could be, I mean, I, I'm trying to put a hitch in, and I'm just asking, is that?
Yeah, so if the council wants to give us direction, we can, we can obviously research that and bring something back, um, uh, related to, uh, no overnight parking period. Uh, we would have to kind of define what that is and make sure that that's, um, you know, allowable in the law.
Sure.
Um, but we would be happy to do that if the council settles.
Well, keep going, please. And, um, let's see. And I just, when you were explaining about the permit transfer, I don't know if it was clear. I didn't hear it clearly, but what I'm reading, just, uh, with regard to the owner being able to transfer the, the person's, first permit to another vehicle or another trailer. That's, that's basically what you were saying, right? Is so, as long as it's a real.
Yeah.
That's another person.
So the owner, yeah, the owner has, uh, a rig that he normally uses. Has to go to the shop because it hit something or mechanically needs a repair. He then rents or uses another vehicle during that period. He, but he would have to get, he would have to make sure that there's a notice of the chief of police and the drug superintendent. Um, so they're aware of that, that change. Um.
Thank you. I, I, that's what I understood. I just wanted to make sure anyone listening heard it clearly as well. Okay, and, um, I think that is it. Is there any public comment? Questions? Any hands raised?
Just of these, uh, truckers.
Okay, we come to the.
They idle their vehicles, so if two hours of sitting there idling, um, and.
I'm sorry, can you tell me a name?
I'm John. I live, John Snyder. I live on the end of Central Street.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, just that the, uh, the, the, the vehicle's idle. And, uh, if you're going to give them two hours sitting there, they need to keep their engines warm, but they're pumping out, you know, fumes into the port or whatever.
So then? So that was the president of idling. You're saying that that needed to be addressed? I, okay, I just want to make sure I understood it. Thank you. Okay, um, then I think that is all. Is there a motion? Thank you for that. Johnson, is there a motion to continue the item to our next regular meeting of November eighteenth for a second public hearing and potential adoption? So, you have a section, uh, motion, is there a second?
Sure.
You have a motion and a second. Motion carries four, zero.
Fairness, if I may.
Oh, sure.
It would also be my recommendation, just for simplicity, that the council also direct staff to look into the two-hour parking in these two blocks, the six-hundred-and-five block of Wildwood, just to keep this simple.
Yes. And we all agreeable on that? And we just do another little amendment vote? Motion?
Motion second.
So, thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, fine. Motion carries four, zero. That way it's official. All right. And now we'll move on to the council reports and communications. Mayor, go to it.
Thank you. Uh, meeting wise, November thirteenth, uh, five-thirty P M at the fire hall is the fire commissioner's meeting. I'll be at that one. Right after that is the school board meeting at six-thirty, um, where this public hearing is going to be. So, uh, I'll be at both of those. I went to the chamber of commerce meeting yesterday. Lots of stuff going on. They are decorating for Christmas, November twenty-second and twenty-third. Any volunteers are appreciated. They're doing the bridge again this year. It's good, exciting stuff. Um, if there is overflow, they will decorate, um, the weekend after Thanksgiving too. We don't anticipate there to be overflow. The Christmas tree lighting is December sixth at five P M at the resource center. It's always fun. The Lander Matt has had their soft opening. They do want to have a big grand opening party. That is yet to be determined when, but I will keep everybody posted and let's get out there and support a new business. Um, I guess there is a dog groomer opening in town soon, which is also very exciting. Again, soft opening, more to come.
Um, corner monument and.
Yeah, he's where the resource center used to be, in the building with the mural on it with the people.
What do you?
And now the dog. It's a great business for Rio del. Um, Toys for Tots is being hosted by the barber shop at Emerald Z this year, December fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. That's a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday from ten A M to four P M. It's a really nice thing, uh, they're doing for the community. Also, on November twenty-second, we have a big Rio del community dinner. Um, and that is a partnership between the resource center, the fire department, the school district, the Journey Church, Liberty Tackle, Tabernacle, and the Rio del Church of Christ. Um, it is a Thanksgiving dinner event that is free for everyone who wants to come. Um, I think it's a really important thing. It'll be in the Rio del cafeteria, three to six, yeah, three to six P M, November twenty-second. We're living in weird times. People are scared and, um, I think that this, this was all in books anyway, but it's a, it's a really good time to have this option for people and, and families and our community who, uh, might be kind of concerned about their Thanksgiving dinner this year. Um, and it's a wonderful collaboration between a bunch of organizations that are really, really trying to step up and meet people where they're at and help in, in a way that is meaningful and positive. So anybody who wants to attend that dinner, the word does please, spread the word. Uh, anybody who wants to help with that dinner, um, please do let me know or talk to Sarah Reback at the resource center. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Orr?
Uh, just two quick things. One, I wanted to say how great it was to see kids out on Halloween. I've lived over there for a while now and had, never had a trick or trigger. We actually had some, unfortunately. I don't hear their P either. I go to their house, kudos for showing up. Um, and the second is the high school is doing their yearly M A D projects for the juniors. Um, they need volunteer hours. They need to come up with a whole plan and stuff. So if there's any organizations in town that need volunteer work done, um, if any of them cannot find a sponsor or a mentor for this project, we would be glad to have a list to give them.
This is for tonight.
For tonight.
I'm on it. And would you, um, tell the world what M A D stands?
Uh, it's making difference. So it's different than the other M A D.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, a question to Councilmember Orr. The community general was at the school cafeteria then?
The school cafeteria on the twenty-second. I believe that's a Saturday, three to six P M.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, thank you. Yeah. Back on, on line, I just have, uh, the re, um, I'll be back. R C E A, I mean, they study them, eh? Or R C E A has their meetings on Monday. Actually, I got the fourth week rather than Thursday because of, because of Thanksgiving and Christmas. Well, I don't know if it's normal in the, the D S, but you'll do on Monday, which well, that, that makes a big difference to you. But if you can look on online to get the agenda as well. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
Thank you. And I have, um, H T A meeting tomorrow morning at nine, eight A M. A little transit authority, anyone who didn't know what H T A stands for. So, um, I think that is all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a motion, a second?
Second.
So moved. Adjourned until November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, six P M. Thank you to everyone, thanks for coming.